Good evening. My name is Matthew Hall and I'm an instructional coach at Fulton Elementary. Thank you for having us and I'll let the students introduce themselves.
My name is Karen Anderson.
My name is Emma Allen.
I'm in 4th grade.
My name's Cameron Cohen and I'm in 4th grade.
My name's Sarah Ellis and I'm in 4th grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Very good.
I move the Board of Education to approve the agenda submitted.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move the Board of Education to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on January 12th submitted.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on January 12th, 2015 as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Board salutes. Mr. Prosko.
I'd like to give a shout out, kudos to the Dubuque Senior High School Speech Team for success at the state large group speech contest in Decora on February 7th. Twenty-nine entries from the school went to state and 24 earned Division One ratings, the highest you can earn, Division One. So, great job Rams.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Prosko.
Yes. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Board salute to the students who attended the business after-school program that was coordinated with the Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce in partnership with Northeast Iowa Community College, East Central Intergovernmental Association, Dubuque Area Labor Management, and the Dubuque Community School District. We had over 70 students attend sessions at area businesses designed to give them a look at into a variety of high-demand career fields. Thanks also to the district staff who assisted in planning the event.
Want to congratulate to the Hempstead Science Bowl Team for finishing 3rd in the state this year and being a trophy recipient. This is the 4th time Hempstead has received trophies since 2001. The statewide competition consisted of 40 teams and the Hempstead team outscored its opponents by over 300 points. The team's coach is Nate Oswald and the team members were Andrea Weers, Robert Zartman, Isaac Slagel, Chase Johnson, and Luke Ellert Beck. Congratulations to them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Whitehead.
I have one. Congratulations to the Hempstead and senior students who had artwork selected for the Dubuque High School's juried art show. At the University of Dubuque, these students were selected by a panel of their teachers with pieces in various media including ceramics, painting, photography, pen and ink, multimedia, and weaving. The exhibit includes 14 works from area students.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Seager. Any other board salutes? Great. Thank you very much. That brings us to the public hearing on the proposed 2015-16 school calendar and Mr. Ryan Gans is going to review that for us first.
Absolutely. Talk a little bit about process and then where we're at and then a little bit of late-breaking news that may have some impact on our conversation tonight. As you know, we received word as a district, as all districts in the state did, that waivers would no longer be granted for school calendars moving into the future except for under some pretty tight guidelines which make it nearly impossible to qualify for that waiver. So, we developed a calendar that met the statute which said that the earliest we could have school was August 31st. We publicized that on our website. We sent an email to about 13,000 people that we have on our database. I know the Holy Family System did likewise with their folks, so I don't know how what number of people that went to. So, a large number of people were notified that there was a calendar for proposed calendar for next year. We had 449 people respond to the calendar. Of that, 272 were parents of DCSD students, 44 were staff members, 17 were Holy Family staff members, I believe, and 87 were Holy Family -- I'm sorry, 87 was the combined total of staff members and parents from Holy Family and then 18 folks identified themselves as community members. So, in context, 449 responses last year, we had about 1,300, so the number of responses down considerably as we tried to create a calendar that was as close to last year as we could under the situation. The most common theme from those responses had to do with the end date, which of course is tied very closely to the start date. It's hard to look at one without the other. Folks registering concern about a calendar that landed -- that ended the second week in June, the start date was -- or the end date was June 6th. But with the kind of the timeline as it was proposed, it's about the closest we can -- the shortest we can make that calendar with other holidays in there. However, we did receive news this afternoon that there is some debate going on in Des Moines in regards to that calendar start date, a potential compromise. So, this evening, I think we'll have the public hearing and then when we get down to recommendation, we'll talk about some possibilities of what we may want to do with deciding the calendar tonight or delaying that decision.
That makes sense. So, we are going to go ahead and conduct a public hearing on the proposed or the draft calendar as it sits today and then --
Then we'll have a discussion.
We'll have a discussion after that and we'll make a decision as to whether or not we act on that or potentially given the late-breaking news out of Des Moines is that that seems to have some legs underneath it in terms of discussion, it would allow us to perhaps go back and redraft and then we would follow the same process.
Correct.
That we've done before. If nothing happens in Des Moines in the next couple of weeks, we will be back approving what we've already put out for and have conducted a public hearing for because we don't really don't -- we owe it to parents and others to eventually land on a calendar here in the relatively near future.
Absolutely. So, we published the fact that we have a public hearing tonight, so we certainly want to be respectful of the folks who came to speak and give them that opportunity and then when we're finished, we can -- we can have some recommendation and some discussion. Absolutely.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the proposed 2015-2016 school calendar and authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the proposed 2015-16 school calendar and authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second. It's been moved and seconded twice that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are in -- we are in open session. If there's anybody in the chambers here that'd like to address the board and provide that commentary, please step forward, identify yourself, your address, and again, we'd ask that we keep comments to something in and around three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Karen Anderson. I'm resident at 1205 Glen Oaks Street, Dubuque. I am a teacher at Hempstead High School and I'm here to represent some aspect that this calendar affects that has not been discussed yet and that's the advanced placement classes. I represent the advanced placement teachers from both Hempstead High School and Senior High School and we want to make a very impassioned plea that you really think about adopting a contingency calendar in light of the fact that they might be changing some things at the state level. AP courses mean that they are college credit courses and they offer college credit for those students who pass our -- the test. They are highly rigorous courses with a curriculum that is set by the college board and with test dates that are set by the college board. The test dates are always the first two full weeks in May and that does not change no matter when a district's time -- start time is. These courses end in a final comprehensive test, which is a three-hour exam including both multiple choice and a written component which is expected to be a college-level writing component. For myself, I teach AP World History at Hempstead. This is a sophomore-level course. I am many students' first exposure to advanced placement classes. The students who come into my class are not at a college-level writing. I -- it is my job to get them to college-level writing and in order to do that, I need time and so do my colleagues. While I understand the board's desire to be respectful of families and parents, I also believe that the public is not fully knowledgeable on the extent that this calendar change will have an impact on the students that are taking AP courses. This proposed calendar, there will be a loss of one to two entire units of time. For many of our students, they take multiple AP classes and this means multiple units of study will be lost. All of that information will still be tested on the AP exam when the AP exam is held. Not taking into a -- this is not taking into account the loss of instructional time that happens for unforeseen things like weather. So, this is a major impact on the students who are taking these tests. This is should be what is driving our decision about calendars is what impact it is going to have on students and not necessarily what impact it will have on families or vacation times. Just to give you some idea of how many students are impacted by this, last year in 2014, we had 550 exams were taken in the Dubuque Community School District at the AP level. Currently, we have over 1,000 students enrolled in AP classes between Hempstead and Senior. So, this is a significant portion of the high schools. This is a real concern that has been expressed to me by my students who, as I said, are sophomores in high school. As they look at taking more AP classes in the upcoming year, they have expressed that they do not feel comfortable if they don't have the amount of time that they might need to get all of the learning done that they need to do before those exams are taken. If that's the case, some of them are thinking about opting out of AP courses. That means that we are losing students who are challenging themselves in rigorous classes and on top of that, we are losing the money that the college board gives to schools based on the number of students who take AP tests. So, it is both a financial and pedagogical problem. Many of my students feel so passionately about this that they have been writing to their legislators and just this weekend, one of my students got a email back from Brad Buck from the Department of Ed telling her that the governor is thinking about, as you just mentioned, thinking about maybe changing this. I think we really want to think as a district about having a backup plan and not just moving forward and expecting the governor to not give us the waiver because we can't make that decision. We don't know what it's going to be, but we certainly can have a plan and be ready if we do get a waiver. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the chambers wishing to address the board and provide public input? No?
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in regular session. Well, let me tell you, it's probably second only to making that go-no-go call in the morning when you're faced with inclement weather as approving a calendar and I really appreciate the public input and can tell you, that has been first and foremost in our minds. We have talked, we were in Des Moines last week expressing our concerns about at least at that time, what we saw is a lack of flexibility and lack of local control because those are the type of factors that we believe school boards need to have the latitude in order to make the right decisions for our kids and having a couple of girls who took great advantage of the AP courses. I know exactly what you're talking about in terms of amount of time and every day we shave off of that really has an impact on our kids and the way that they can utilize those types of credits. And so, I want to let everybody know that even though we didn't mention it tonight in the review, we have talked about it numerous times about the impact that that type of calendar that would really compress that AP instructional time particularly in that second half of the year and that's a big issue and we know that. And so, we will be -- I can -- the superintendent only had like seven or eight drafts of a calendar when I -- when we first met with him. So, I know that there are alternate calendars that we will go to if given that latitude because we do think that that's important. That's one of many things, I think many considerations that are out there, so. Discussion?
I'd just like to make a couple of comments concerning the calendar. I thank Ms. Anderson for echoing her thoughts about AP. I think this has further implications, not only in the AP area, but also this idea and I know it's against the state mandates, the semesters ending at Christmas. I, as a secondary teacher, and I talked to a lot of teachers this year, they love that concept. It gives closure to the semester where in -- and this is the first year we've had it and there was a very good response to it. And by our survey, the end dates were seen to be the most concerned and if we were restricted to the start time, start and stop time, we're basically not ending as early as many of our parents would like us to end. This also has implications for graduation. And I think overall that we need to kind of, as you indicated, Mike, we need to make sure that we maintain local control. I don't think the school calendar, I've heard this from a lot of people too, the school calendar should not be dictated necessarily by business enterprises, by a few people on the Board of Education, the state board. And I think that we, as a board here, need to look at that and I agree with Karen's message that I don't know for sure if we need to adopt an alternative and or keep this one as a possibility in case. But I do know that we are kind of a little bit behind the eight ball in that there are many, many school districts and I've researched this, there are many, many school districts, particularly around the central part of Iowa and Des Moines, that have adopted their calendars, for example, some of them way back in August, October. And so, they have, they have their calendars all set up. They can use the argument to the governor or whoever that, hey, our parents have got their vacations all planned already, you're going to come and change this on us. So, I don't think the state, number one, I don't think they're going to find the school districts, number one. That's a separate bill, by the way, that penalizing the school districts 1/180th for every day they would start school earlier. I don't think they're going to do that and it was indicated that the governor would compromise. So, I think we need to come up with a new game plan, a new calendar, and maybe have option A, option B, whatever you want to call it.
What's the new -- you said there was some new information?
Absolutely. So, my recommendation, I know my village of comments, is to, in light of the news that came from Des Moines today, that the House Subcommittee was, which is controlled by the party, the governor's party, is discussing a compromise which would allow schools to start and this was just the beginning of the conversation, so it may evolve from there as early as August 23rd. So, it doesn't give complete local control, but it certainly moves the window by a week or so from where it's at currently. So, I believe at this point, we shouldn't adopt a calendar. We should listen to the public input as well as buy at our time. It's a little fortuitous that we have a board meeting this month in two weeks and so we can act on this relatively quickly because I do believe changes, if they're going to be made, will come quickly now in Des Moines. And so, I think we do have some time to slow down and see what those changes are. This is the meeting traditionally where we've always adopted the calendar. State law does not require us to adopt a calendar until mid-March, so from a legal aspect, we were not really in a hurry, but we like to stay on the track for the pattern and I certainly am not in favor of pushing it off several months, but certainly a couple of weeks seems to be a realistic time for us to slow down and maybe catch our breath and see what those changes are, what changes, if any, come out of Des Moines and we'll know what sort of the rules to the game are and then we can consider what impact that does have on ends of semesters, AP exams, a variety of other issues that flow out there as well.
Yeah, I was -- oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Tom.
The thing I would ask is if we do adopt a calendar, that's got to be it.
Yep.
And we made a huge mistake 15 years ago when we adopted a calendar and then we changed the calendar and then we changed it back. We changed it back because in the few days between the time we adopted it and changed it and people caught wind of it. I mean, this was before email was popular. I had this, I had more emails, I think, in over that issue in a one-week period than I've gotten in my other three terms on the board combined and it was before email was popular. People had made plans for, we went from 16 days over Christmas to 12, so people had made plans for family trips to England. The tickets were purchased and so they were appropriately very, very angry when we changed the adopted calendar on them. So, whatever we do, I hope we adopt it once and that is it, regardless of how long we take to adopt one. And in the meantime, that gives us, we do want to consider all the input that we've had, like AP classes, et cetera.
And the idea would be to, as I said earlier, follow the same process. So, if we do come up with a, if there's something that does break in Des Moines, we'll put forth another draft and put that out for comment so that we can make sure that we've really --
Absolutely. We'll -- and have another opportunity for public input at a session like that.
Absolutely. Yeah.
The only thing that I, you know, if the governor's going to come out with a set time, I'm wondering if they're ever going to allow for any type of flexibility in the calendar. Were you ever to do a balanced calendar or if that's ever going to happen or if this is going to be set in stone? Because one of the things that I liked about the new calendar, the only thing that really stood out for me was the changing of the graduation date away from my just Memorial Weekend because Memorial Weekend fluctuates every year to year, but it's still always when graduation is. And I liked the fact that if we moved it, it wouldn't be held to a holiday weekend and we could change it to a time down the road, you know. I really liked getting away from Memorial Weekend, but that's neither here nor there right now, but I don't want us to get hung up on Memorial Weekend for graduation date only because if we ever look at changing our calendar down the road for a balanced calendar, you got to get away from having a set graduation date on a holiday, just because it's a holiday.
Any other discussion or comments? Probably look for a motion.
So, where are we at here now? We're looking for a motion to --
Well, if you want a recommendation, then a motion. My recommendation would be that we have the public hearing and that we table this in light of the fact that there may be changes in the short run and we can take up the conversation again in two weeks at our next board meeting.
Yep. So, I'll make a motion that we table the discussion on the proposed calendar.
That's it?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table.
Second, twice.
Yes. Second, don't make a three. To table the discussion around the 2015-16 school calendar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
And then I'll make a motion that we continue to work up a alternative calendar.
We don't need it.
We don't need it?
Don't need a motion for that.
We don't need a motion for that.
But we do need a calendar eventually.
We do need a calendar.
We promise we will get one. Great. Thank you very much.
And the target would be just, what is it, 23rd?
Actually, the 23rd of August is on a Sunday according to my calendar.
23rd of February to continue this discussion, our next board meeting.
Okay.
I could share what I, I mean, I called down and tried to talk to a couple legislators and it sounds like the 23rd is on a Sunday.
On a Sunday, yeah.
It's on a Sunday. So, it would be that week is essentially when you would, when according to the bill and that bill can morph all over the place by the time it's done. There's some thought that the bill could be discussed this week, which would be good if it's discussed this week. No one's quite sure where it's going to go. Ds and Rs fistfight over different things. If there was, if there was a negative about setting a date of the 23rd, it's simply that that's another date that doesn't allow for local control. And one of the thought, there's a big argument, apparently there's a big discussion in Des Moines about whether or not there should be local control, how much local control there should be. We are all in favor of more local control than not because our, because then Karen Anderson can walk up to the podium and give us a good talking to right here in Dubuque, Iowa, catch us at Hy-Vee or whatever it might be. That's how the system's supposed to work. So, it'll be interesting, but it could be this week that the bill is discussed. Sooner would be better than later.
It's my understanding they've been on the fast track because there are many districts, some who have were early, but many who are in the same position we're in.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are in open forum. Mr. Burkhart, I know you have a guess.
Board members, Superintendent Ryan Gans, good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Craig Clefis. Craig is our Alliant representative. We work with him throughout the school year. He makes us aware of rebate programs we may want to take into consideration for projects. He supplies us with energy use information that we use in our school buildings to help us make decisions going forward. And tonight, he has some very exciting news regarding the Kennedy Project and I'll let him explain that.
Well, thank you very much. My name's Craig Clefis. I work for Alliant Energy and thank you for the chance to be in front of the Dubuque Community School District, superintendent, the school board members and staff and other residents of the district. But when you guys are looking at, I would say additions or renovations to your facilities and one of the programs Alliant Energy has is the commercial new construction program. So, really, it looks at the whole building, be it the lighting, heating and cooling systems, insulation, the whole package of it. So, Alliant Energy, our program, works with the representatives of the school district, architects, your design team, to see what you could implement as far as energy efficiencies. So, when we started looking at the Kennedy, Kennedy School Project, there was a huge addition there and renovation and obviously you guys determined the best interest was go to the geothermal system. So, with that, your savings is, you know, substantial, but it's an ongoing savings that you will receive for years to come. And so, I'm just here to, you know, comment or and appreciate that what the school district does, they'll be very proactive in their energy efficiency minded and so part of that was the rebate that comes after the everything's taken care of or everything's done. The school district was looking at a potential of $120,000 rebate check, but when the white group came back in and did a verification on it, your check is actually $128,714. So, Alliant Energy, part of that, I thought we'd bring a substantial, a large check for you guys to be able to see what the school district --
Can you cash that?
That one you can't, but the one with the routing numbers on it.
Don't sign the backs, Dan.
I think we can still change the amount. Let me see if that --
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I would give that to Kevin, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
It obviously goes without saying that also Bill and Charlie's work in making sure that these projects, keep an eye on this as well as alliances, is appreciated and probably the reason that we went from 120 to 128,000.
Yep. Good job. Thank you. Are there any other persons in the forum wishing to address the board at this time?
I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any board members wishing to have any items within that agenda pulled out for further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to Educational Programs Policy Strategy Committee. Mr. Prosko.
Yes, our committee.
Nobody's report.
Oh, did I skip?
I didn't want to read all that anyway.
Oh. Well, here is up first.
She's all caffeined up, ready to go.
Are you? Okay. All right. Well, we'll go to facilities then because I don't want to keep you from enjoying this moment.
Yeah, well, thanks. Like the limelight. Okay. Facility Support Services, a few motions. I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution. Resolve that the Board of Directors of the Dubuque Community School District will levy property tax for fiscal year 2015-16 for the --
property tax for fiscal year 2015-16 for the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under Section 257.14 Code of Iowa.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution. Resolve that the Board of Directors of the Dubuque Community School District will levy property tax for fiscal year 2015-16 for the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under Section 257.14 Code of Iowa. Any discussion?
I don't think so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Do you want me to do it? Or did you want to say something?
No.
Okay, sorry. You were looking at it. Okay, I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Dubuque Community School District, district sponsors health insurance or a group health plan in which certain eligible employees are offered health coverage. Whereas the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, ACA, enacted on March 23, 2010, added Section 49808, shared responsibility for employers regarding healthcare coverage to Title 26 of the United States Code. Whereas the school district is considered a large employer based on the employment of at least 50 full-time employees, including an equivalent for part-time employees during the preceding calendar year. As a large employer, the district may be subject to penalties if coverage is not offered to full-time employees, or if the coverage offered does not meet the requirements of the law. Whereas Section 49808 imposes a penalty on large employers for, one, failing to offer full-time employees and their dependents the opportunity to enroll in group health coverage, or for, two, offering coverage to full-time employees and their dependents that is unaffordable or that does not provide minimum value. In both cases, penalties are imposed if any full-time employee purchases coverage through the state exchange and receives a premium tax credit. Whereas the ACA requires the district to offer health coverage to full-time employees. And whereas the IRS has provided two methods for determining whether an employee is full-time. One, the monthly measurement period, I'm sorry, the monthly measurement method, and two, the look-back measurement method. The district has adopted the look-back measurement method to determine the full-time status of all employees. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District by action at its February 9, 2015, meeting, the following. One, the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District shall comply with the requirements of the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act to the best of its ability. Two, the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District delegates to the superintendent, including his/her designees. Two, establish time periods, govern the measurement and tracking of employee hours, and/or authorize otherwise established procedures implementing in accordance with Section 49808. Second.
Second.
Thanks.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution concerning health insurance coverage as read. Any discussion?
This is just something I think that we are doing, a resolution that we will be following the guidelines of the ACA, and giving health insurance to employees that are considered full-time.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Team Services for subsurface exploration for the transportation facility improvements project in the amount of $5,700. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Team Services for subsurface exploration for the transportation facility improvements project in the amount of $5,700. Mr. Burkhart, do you want to give us an overview?
Bill and the Browns is recommending this, approving this agreement with Team Services to allow for soil borings to be taken. That information will be used to develop plans and specifications for the replacement of the transportation asphalt. That asphalt is, at the end of its design life, there are new school bus designs that are forcing bigger areas to keep the buses. We need 22 more employee spaces, and this will provide a solution for those needs there. That's the drive behind that.
Great, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Team Services for subsurface exploration for the senior high school tennis court rehabilitation project in the amount of $8,700. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Team Services for subsurface exploration for the senior high school tennis court rehabilitation project in the amount of $8,700.
And these soil borings would also be used to develop plans and specs for the goals there of improving stabilization to the existing tennis court slab, resurfacing the tennis court, and making stormwater improvements.
Which we have some issues over there, don't we?
Yes, we do, for lack of a better term. It appears that the tennis court is sliding down the hill. We need to get a stabilizer repaired.
Which could be advantage on one end of the court, but not just on the other end.
Makes that lob tougher.
It really does. A lot taller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education approve Selsa Schaefer Architects, Inc. as the architect engineer for the Hempstead High School Athletic Improvements Project in the amount of $5,500. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Selsa Schaefer Architects, Inc. as the architect engineer for the Hempstead High School Athletic Improvements Project in the amount of $5,500.
The architect will develop conceptual plans there. We have several goals. Three that I'd like to share with you are installing steps and ADA access to the practice field at the Hempstead practice field, including future spectator seating improvements, a new storage slash restroom slash concession building to be used at the football and tennis court area, and finally, new dugouts, spectator seating, and stormwater improvements at the baseball field. The architect will engage all the users of that facility, develop a conceptual plan, will develop a timeline after that, report back to you on what the estimated cost will be. We'll have a plan that we will agree on a timeline, three to five years, to solve all these issues.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the board president to sign the authorization to proceed into the conceptual schematic design phase for the senior high school renovation project. Second.
It's been moved and seconded with emphasis that the Board of Education authorize the board president to sign the authorization to proceed into conceptual schematic design phase for the senior high school renovation project.
And this is a milestone that we've reached down. We want to make sure the board members are aware of that. And just a real quick description, in pre-design, we were looking at broad global overview needs of the school. Now going into schematic design, they'll drill down further, actually take the rooms, design them, and prove that there were several assumptions discussed in that design project, and try to prove that that's the proper way to go. So we'll start drilling down with more detail now in this next section. We just want to make sure everybody's aware we're moving on.
Absolutely.
I'd just like to comment that Tammy and I have both been on the committee, the pre-conception committee, for senior high redevelopment or improvement. And it's been very eye-opening. The committee's been moving with very good progress. Architects are doing a good job, and it's been great being on there, and it's glad to see that something's going to be done at senior high school.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I just want to say that I was very impressed when we received the possible drawings of what -- I went to senior, and I'm excited. I was not able to be a part of the committee, and I haven't been able to meet any meetings, but I've heard that you guys have made great progress, and I'm excited to see some schematic plans, so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We'll get Tammy's wrath. Okay. That motion carries. Thank you very much.
All right. I move that the Board of Education approve Anderson Design and Consulting, Inc. as the architect engineer for the maintenance storage building project in the amount of $16,950.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Anderson Design and Consulting, Inc. as the architect engineer for the maintenance storage building project in the amount of $16,950.
If this project goes forward, it allows to stop renting containers, no reason to store off-season equipment right now. It'll also allow additional district vehicles to be moved inside outside of the weather, extending the life of the equipment, and it'll also allow us to move lawn and snow equipment from the Alta Vista campus, consolidate it here at BMG, and become more efficient.
What did you say about the burning of some of that?
It allows to stop renting containers and storing off-season equipment.
Off-season.
Yep. We're renting storage containers right now. So several hundred-dollar bills a month going out.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Okay, now we will go to the Educational Programs Policy Strategy Committee. Report, Mr. Prosska.
Thank you. The Ed Programs Committee met on February 3, and we had a report from Amy Hawkins, we had an activities report. Basically, a lot of the report involved the activity buses running after-school programs, the bus ridership at Jefferson Middle School, very high. The Hempstead Roosevelt route seemed to be quite a bit lower, and they're going to be kind of being taken a look at, see what, if they'll be maintained or kept next year. We also discussed a little bit about some of the facility improvement needs at Washington and senior, some minor improvements to mats and screens. We did bring up the idea of asking Amy about the negotiations that are presently maybe going on with Clark College in regard to using Dalzell Field. Then we also had a presentation by our superintendent regarding the IJAG program, and basically, it's for students who need multiple assistance at the high school level. The state pays half the teacher's salary, and we pay half the teacher's salary. There's two teachers at each school.
Correct.
Then we discussed, we were presented with the Dubuque School Improvement Leadership Team membership, and I think Tammy is the board representative on that.
I am, and I have a question before we talk about the membership on that. Can I ask it now? I was just, I know I brought it up at the meeting really quick, not to interrupt you, about the number of the membership, and then I didn't have the same report at the meeting that I have here, and I just was counting. Can we reevaluate this before we vote on it? We have, I was counting, it is heavily administrative and teacher compared to parents and community. And before I approve, before I, I know I brought it up before, and I just think it's way disproportionate, as I'm sitting here and counting it, and I just don't, I don't like it.
It's based on the fact that the adult representation is either, every school sends one representative, either the administrator, or a teacher, or a parent. So by the very nature of how it's distributed, there are more staff, people...
But there's 17 listed here from the forum.
They tend to be facilitators of the organizational conversation. We do, we do use them to kind of preload so that we can have a conversation, so.
I just wish we'd had more parents.
Yeah, parents.
I mean, and less, either, I mean, because when I've gone, it's an administrator and a teacher usually shows from a building, not from the same school?
Not from the same school, no.
Well, then it's...
What time of day are these meetings, committee meetings held?
They're held on Wednesdays from 9:00 to 11:30. This year, we'll meet twice. Ordinarily, they are scheduled four times a year. This year, we will meet twice.
Is there any possibility that, I would think that time of day would...
It is.
Would keep parents off, and they're based upon the time of the meetings. Is there any way that time could be adjusted?
The time can be adjusted.
I mean, I guess, you know, I brought it up at the committee, and I really looked at it this time, and I was just like, I really don't like it. I just, it's just, I don't know, do we have to approve it at this particular time? Can we discuss changing the time, and then maybe getting different parents on it before we approve it?
Yeah, I mean, the time is not what we're approving as the membership.
But should you alter the time, you like get more parents to be able to participate.
Right. I think we can take it back to next month, Ed Programs Subcommittee. I don't think it's timely to the extent where it can't be pushed back a month for further discussion.
Well, that's all right. I don't mean to throw that at you, but as I was sitting here looking at this and I started counting, and I'm like, it just seems so disproportionate.
Originally, you know, the bylaws were written by the first original group, which was made up of that same combination of a representative from each school site council. And so that's kind of where those three, that triangle is, an administrator, or a teacher, or a parent. Then we've added the invitation that we would like as many students as a school would choose to send to the committee. And so that brings that out, and then finally, the staff here are used primarily to help facilitate conversations around whatever the topic is, so.
Well, I guess it's going back to, it's 14-15, it's already February, and we've only had one meeting anyway, so I guess we could approve it.
Yeah, to push it back a month is not an issue.
No big deal.
Yeah, right.
Because I would suspect that the timing of the meeting probably eliminates a lot of teachers and parents.
Or parents, right.
But the flip side is it facilitates students, because we bring students to and from the building. So I mean, it was good conversation, we certainly can have it at the next...
Yeah, I just wanted, last time, we really made a passionate plea that we really want that makeup to be a little bit more balanced.
It's not be all right.
So that, so that motion, then, after I finish...
Yeah, we just won't make the motion.
Just don't make the motion.
Yeah. Are we, any more discussion on that? If not, I will continue with some of the other things that we did at our committee meeting. We discussed our, a new vision and values that more mirrored our strategic plan was presented, and everybody was pretty well pleased with the, with the new vision that was presented. We also discussed temporary committees. We discussed also the activity council as far as the member, minor revisions for the number of board members on there. We discussed legal council, then obviously, we discussed the school calendar to some extent. And then we also discussed somewhat the ability of our school district to attract subs, substitute teachers, based upon, you know, the little bit of a crisis we have in some schools. And this, the article in the Telegraph Herald kind of indicated a little bit of some of the issues that took place there. So I think we're going to try to develop some plans in regard to this down the road to ensure that we have enough adequate substitute teachers.
That's clearly a supply and demand issue, and so demand is low, or supply is low, so we better figure a way to influence that.
In lieu of my changing, I'm going to make a motion that we table the vote on the approval of the de-silt membership as submitted.
I second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we table the approval of the district school improvement leadership team membership. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to, anything else?
No, we're done.
Thank you. Brings us to new business.
I move that the Board of Education allow student number 704766 to reenter the Dubuque Community School District effective February 11, 2015.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education allow student number 704766 to reenter the Dubuque Community School District effective February 11, 2015. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 707225 at this time.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education allow student number 704766 to reenter the Dubuque Community School District effective February 11, 2015. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student 707225 at this time.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student 707225 at this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right. Any non-agenda items that any board members will want to bring up at this point? Any administrative issues?
At this time?
Okay.